Today is February 11th, 2022 at 12 o'clock and this is the regular meeting agenda of the Finance Committee of the City of Delray Oaks. Karen, could you please do a call to order or a roll call?
Councilmember Shirley?
Here.
Councilmember Donaldson?
Here.
Mayor Kerr?
Here. So now it's time for a public comment. Any general public comment must deal with matters subject to this jurisdiction of the city and the committee that are not on the current agenda. Anyone wishing to address the Finance Committee on Matters Not Appearing may do so now. The public may comment on any other matter listed on the agenda at the time the matter is being considered. There will be a time limit of no more than three minutes for each speaker. No action will be taken. Any public comment? All right, we're going to close a public comment and move on to our first item. Introduction of Consultant Financial Support Team: Regional Government Services. I'll turn this over to City Manager Gerton.
Yeah, so considering the virtual environment that we've been operating in lately and some of the changes with our contract with RGS and the services, we've been asking them to help us with to continue to modernize our processes. The team has expanded a little bit. We've been asking more of Roberto than Roberto can provide for us on his own. So, so his team is expanding, so I thought it'd be a good opportunity to put some names to faces, since we're not all in the same room together very often. And just so that you and the community could see who, who at RGS is helping us with our financial services right now. And with that, I'll turn it over to Roberto.
Thank you. So it's a pleasure to bring everybody before you so you can see who really does all the work behind the scenes. So it would take a little bit of time to introduce them, their background and what they actually do for the city. I'm going to start with Hermelinda Flores, just because that's where the work begins with the workflow. So Hermelinda, do you want to introduce yourself a little bit and tell them what you do?
Yeah, hello, my name is Hermelinda Flores. And I've been with RGS for about a year and a half. Before RGS, I worked when, in the private sector for about 25 years. And six years ago, I started to work in the private sector and I started with Ford or Use Authority as an accountant. There, I entered in process payroll, reported and processed calculators contributions. And also reporting process the 457 deferred retirement contribution, entered invoices, processing invoices for payment, processed accounts receivable, I read the deposits and then entered journal entries. Currently, for the City of Delray Oaks, I process payroll twice a month. Each cycle consists of entry payroll into the DAP for the payroll system. Reviewing reports for accuracy, getting approvals, process payroll, download reports. I do the check distribution for staff, I create journal entries. I also do the reporting and contribution and journal entries for the calculators, as well for the 457 deferred retirement plan. And then the, the cycle repeats again the end of the month or the beginning of the month. I also process the payables, I enter each invoice, I review account codes, request approval through documents, attach each invoice to each entry in MIP. I review the final report for accuracy and send for approval, process invoices for payment. And I also process the positive pay and submit to the bank. At the end of each month, I review bank statements and download reports. I review electronic payments to match the journal entries and I also review the revenue and statement reports. Also help with the audit research and uploading our reports. Put reports for the bank recalls, reconciliations, entry journal entries when requested. Also download reports from MIP, ADP and calculators when needed. I enter new employees into the system and ADP and calculators. I process the yearly reports and I do filing and updating of files.
So, an interesting side note regarding Hermelinda is that she could very well have been your employee already at this point. You see, when Kim was actually going to retire, the city started making plans to cover those, those, all these items that Hermelinda just mentioned. And Hermelinda was interviewed at the time she was at FORA and would have come on board except that COVID hit, Kim said, "Not, not the time to leave just yet." So in the meantime, FORA ended and RGS picked up Hermelinda. So now she works for RGS at Delray Oaks and other agencies. And Hermelinda, even though we're, you know, virtual here, she lives, she lives in Salida. So, you know, she used to commute over to the FORA offices. Now she doesn't have to commute, she just gets on the computer and takes care of all you, all your invoices and the like. So the work begins with her, all the, all the money going out to the city goes to her first. Once it comes through, then Linda takes the next step. But Linda, introduce yourself and tell them a little bit what you do here.
Hey, hi, Linda Wong. And I've been with RGS for about two years. And I previously, I retired from City of Walnut Creek. I was their payroll supervisor. So I, I used to live up in Walnut Creek, but I'm currently based in Southern California now, living in Orange County, so it'd be close to family. And also besides payrolls, I also did, worked on the CAFR and other general accounting matters for them. And part of that, I was with City of Concord and I was their budget analyst. And then before that, I was, have CPA experience in both the public and private sector. And I have a limited role with Delray Oaks. I, I work on the bank reconciliations. So I want to make sure all the entries have been recorded and everything balances. And I work with Hermelinda if any adjustments are needed. So that's been my role.
So, so one of the buses that the city received when we brought Linda on is separation of duties, because that's one thing the auditors have been harping on, because Kim would issue paychecks, she would take deposits, and she would also reconcile the bank accounts, which is not, not good internal controls. You need somebody else looking at those numbers besides the person that did it. And just for your info, bank reconciliation is one of the things that they had given the city and Kim quite a headaches as a start of the system, just because of the way the system works. Linda came in and she, she is great at this. She does bank breaks and a couple of other agencies. They have an accounting background. She's been able to now get us to the point where bank breaks are way smoother, take a lot less time than they used to. And the other side note about Linda is she has these beautiful Excel worksheets. I've never seen anybody document their worksheets so well, anything that we get. We get it from Linda, it's very well documented. So her role is basically just that part, but it is, creates a separation of duties.
Yeah, she also, just so you see how small the community is, she worked for years with my sister-in-law in Walnut Creek.
Oh, John, I want to say, I saw your office from Karen's view. I have the sign that you have up on your wall.
I do, yeah, I got, I got that from City of Monterey.
Yeah, so Walnut Creek did that sign too.
So once, you know, the bills are paid and the bank records are done, then we get to the accounting side of the financial reports and budgeting and things of that nature. And that's where Beth Mariano has come in to give me a hand. Beth, do you mind introduce yourself?
Yes, I, I live in Marina, so I'm just your neighbor. I've been with the City of Salinas for 30 years and Roberto hired me when I started with the city. And I retired as the Assistant Finance Director. And my experience covers basically everything, the day-to-day operation, the audit, the budget, and whatever comes in my office. I had some experience also managing grants. And I started working for RGS in 2020 when I retired. Roberto asked me to join him and I really enjoy working with him. And for Delray Oaks, what I do, whatever Robert put on my plate.
So Beth helped us also clean up some issues that were in the, in the general ledger, some accounts that were not quite set up right. She's gone through and helped resolve what the issue is. She's good at just getting in there and digging out the details and figuring out what's wrong. So as such, the books are just about 100% clean. There's still a couple of little things, but we're just about there. Now we're going to, Beth is going to go back and start closing the books, because the books have never been closed. Bring them all forward and ensure that there's no errors going forward. So, one of the things to keep in mind, when, when, actually, when the city first hired me, I was not with RGS. I had my own consulting business and I was a one-person operation, which, I mean, I liked it. But then again, from the, the other side, the employer's perspective, it's not good to have one-person operation, because something happens to that person, you're in a heap of trouble. So as you can tell here, there's a wealth of talent behind me. If anything should ever happen to me, you have people that can carry on doing the work. Plus, they're all kind of experts in their field, so they can get the work done quickly. I mean, Linda can do a bank break much faster than I can. So it helps to have people that are experts in the areas that they do. And like I said, to me, the main thing is you, you do have a team behind you. It's not just one person taking care of things. And so the systems are improving and going to continue to improve. There's some more thoughts on how to improve the systems going forward. If you have any questions about the team or RGS, I'd be more happy to answer you that. Otherwise, this is your team right now.
Let's go ahead and any questions, comments, Ms. Shirley?
Um, no, I just want to thank you. Roberto, I already had faith in you, but now I have so much more faith, like when I met your team. These are great ladies, so, and it's nice to hear what they do. And yeah, I understand now sort of the separation of duties and how important that is. So thanks for that explanation and, and it's just nice to have this insight. So, thank you.
Mr. Donaldson?
No, I don't have any questions, but welcome to everyone.
Thank you.
All right, I just want to say that I am thrilled that with the continuation of kind of cleaning up and updating our procedures, I have done financial work for the US government and I understand the need for the separation of, of duties and, and literally numerous eyes on, on the figures for accountability. And, you know, I know Hermelinda made the Christmas party this year. And so I'd like to see Beth, maybe not Linda, but next year. And welcome to the team. And again, thank you for helping us, you know, kind of shine some light on, on some procedures that are long overdue. So thank you.
Mayor, if I could?
Yeah, please.
I just want to add that this team is great. As they show me how to do things easier and more efficiently, Roberto's given me hints through the years, but mostly this last year, it's been a lot of changes and everybody's been very patient with me. But yeah, I'm learning and I appreciate them very much. Their, their knowledge is, it blows me away. So, thank you.
Great. And so, any public comment? I'm seeing none, I'll bring it back. John, anyone else on the call want to state something before we go to the next item?
Oh, I just, it's good to, yesterday was the first time I actually got to meet the whole team too. So it's good to put, like I said, put names to faces and, and really understand who the team is that's helping us out. And, you know, Roberto and I can talk to you more at length about how this is also helping to keep our costs down. That, you know, this was a concerted effort by Roberto and RGS to get the right staff doing the right functions, so that it's not all falling on Roberto and, and we're not being charged for Roberto's time. When it's not necessary.
My postman is showing up, so my dog will announce it very shortly. But I just wanted to say, Roberto, nothing's going to happen to you, right? You're not planning on retiring or anything like that?
Uh, no, not, not just yet, just, just basically, leading to what John said. I was a very high-paid, accounts payable AR person. It's better we have people that can actually do the work faster than I can and that specialize in that field rather than one person doing it all. It just, it's something that the auditors always wanted and now we've got it.
Wonderful, well, thank you. And I'm really glad that you agendized having the whole team here with us. So let's move on to the next item, receive update on status of FY 2021 Audit and Police Services Contract Amendment. Do I turn this over to you, John?
Sure, yeah, and thanks, everyone. If you guys want to jump off now, if you want to listen to Roberto and Chris and I talk, you're welcome to stay. But I'm sure you guys are busy.
Yeah, thanks for inviting us.
Yep.
Bye.
Nice meeting everyone.
Nice to meet you.
Bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay, so, so this item, I know that, you know, the audit and the amendment to the Police Services Contract is something that we've been talking about for a while and, and, you know, best-laid plans being what they are. Things don't always work in the timeline that we'd like them to work at. So there's been some delays on these two things, but work continues to happen. And so I don't want you all or the community to, because you don't see what we're doing day-to-day. So, you know, we want to make sure that everybody's kept in the loop on the progress we are making and when we anticipate to get all this to you. So that's why we put this on the agenda for a status update. And then I'll turn it over to Roberto, because he has the details.
So regarding the audits, it, it will be, I mean, so the light at the end of the tunnel is, is there. It's, March is going to be the month for everything. March 11th, we're going to be bringing this to the Finance Committee, the audit, and then it'll be going to the council. The auditors have been working, they were hoping to get it in to us by noon. So I didn't dissuade them, I didn't think they'd make it, but they were pushing for it. The numbers, the numbers are basically done, but then they have to do a lot of review and their own internal review before they can attest and sign off saying that these are the numbers. Just for your info, the things that have happened is the audit firm, like a lot of other firms, other audit firms, been hit with COVID-19 and employee turnover, which has kind of caused some issues there. There was also a little bit of miscommunication between myself and the auditors. I thought they had everything. Turned out they didn't have everything, so there was a delay in getting some of the information. But they basically have everything now, they're just polishing up the report. And so March, like I said, will be the audit. Also, we'll talk about a little bit more of the Police Department true-up, because that's a whole part of the audit will be provided at that time. Yeah, unfortunately, it's just taken some time and it's not just Delray Oaks. Other agencies that I'm working with are also delayed for very similar reasons. And actually, somewhere back in 2020 still, one agency just finished 2019. So, I mean, Delray Oaks is actually doing pretty good in comparison to some of the other smaller agencies. Typically, the smaller agencies that have the issues, because they're limited personnel, the bigger agencies have a lot of staff to work on these things. But March should, well, not should, will be it, because the report is just about ready. It will be coming forth and we're going to, with the team that you have, we're making changes so that next year, the audit can be done in October, November. We're putting changes in place so this doesn't happen again. Then, yeah, that's it for the audit. Any questions on that before we talk about the airport?
Ms. Shirley, any questions?
No questions, thanks for the update.
Mr. Donaldson?
No, I have no questions, thanks.
Okay, and neither do I. Let's hope that this is the last year for bumps and we don't, you, you know, we don't have to deal with COVID next year. And, you know, everybody stays healthy and we're, and we're back on track. So, John, anything?
No.
Karen, anything? All right, so Roberto, what's next?
Okay, so the Airport Police Services Agreement, where we're at, we're also looking to bring that to you in March. Tim and I, just, you know, Tim and I have been talking, Tim, you know, Tim is at the airport. In the, as soon as we finish our discussions, then it'll be John and Mike. And then it'll be coming to the board for approval. Just so you know, we're basically in agreement on the principles of how the costs are supposed to be allocated. It's the mechanics of how it's actually going to be working. It's always, they say the devil's in the details and that's where we're working on some of that. And the, the numbers are being run by our, the actuary, the city's actuary that actually helps prepare the reports regarding long-term retirement and retiree costs. Those are the ones that we have a little bit of an issue with. You know, the day-to-day costs, Police Department budget is the budget, you know, what they spend. It's just these long-term costs that we want to make sure are addressed properly, because they are long-term in nature, you're not going to see them in the next year. And we want to make sure that should there ever be an into the contract, those costs are accounted for and not just the city's left holding the bag. And, you know, the airport leaves, not, not that they're planning on leaving, you know, they like the contract and everything. It's just taking quite a bit of effort and lack of time on my part, because I've been very busy with quite a few other work and family items. So, but March is, that's it, we're, it will come to the board, it has to, because I'm tired of carrying this thing forward. We're just getting it done.
Okay, Ms. Shirley, any questions?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you, Roberto.
Mr. Donaldson?
No, I don't have any questions, but Roberto, I'm glad you're looking at those long-term commitments and making sure that we're not saddled with something, you know, 10, 20 years down the road. So I think that's very important, you kind of, so that we're not left holding the bag. So I'm really glad that that's a, a piece of your analysis with this. Thank you.
Um, my only question is, I want to ensure, you know, are you keeping track of the time that you're spending on this?
I mean, it's in my time card, I'm not keeping track of it separately, but I can certainly pull that out.
Okay, um, my concern is just the amount of time being spent to correct this. I agree, I think long-term, we don't want to be, I mean, we, we want each partner to be as responsible and, you know, as possible. But I also don't want us to, to have the burden of all the extra expense of making this happen. I think it also needs to be equally shared. So for us, that, that cost makes a big difference. For the airport, they're more easily able to absorb it. So I just hope that at some point, you know, that can come into account.
Yeah, when, when Mike and I meet, that'll become part of the conversation, because that's, that's a very good point. Because we, Roberto's been putting a ton of effort into this and, and, you know, and we're fine doing that, because this is a mutually beneficial partnership that we've entered into. And so the city does get good benefit out of this agreement that we have. So we want to be good partners. But we also, you know, just to be blunt about it, this is a change in the agreement that benefits the airport. It brings it back into equilibrium of where we intended to be with it. It's just the language got a little muddled in the first contract. But as the contract is currently written, it definitely benefits us. So, so the work Roberto's doing will benefit the airport. So, and I don't have any concerns with them understanding that.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, anything else, John, Karen?
The only other thing is, is that we will be getting the audit and we're shooting also for this agreement to get to the council in March, just so you all know that.
Wonderful. Okay, let's move on to item six, receive an overview of Planet Scheduling Software Implementation. Mr. Gerton?
Yeah, so this is, you know, we've been talking at the council level and at this committee about all of the improvements that we're starting to implement for, you know, kind of bringing us up to the 21st century and automating as much as possible the day-to-day activities that we do. This was a great idea from the commander, he brought this to our attention, to automate our scheduling. It's like everything else, implementation is bigger than you think when you first get into it. And there's all the moving pieces that folks like Roberto remind us of. And, and so there's HR implications to this, accounting implications to this. So Chris is going to give you a kind of a quick overview of just what the software is and how it's going to improve his life and the employees' lives day-to-day and increase our efficiencies. And then the reason we're bringing this to you all is because this is going to necessitate a, a change in how we do payroll going forward. And going from one or twice a month payroll to every two-week payroll, which is kind of an industry standard, it's just bringing us to that. But with that, I'll turn it over to the commander, so he can give an overview of the system. Thank you, I want to thank everybody for having me here today. I'm going to share my screen for the second time ever in my life and I'm going to see how this goes. Let's see. You let me know.
We witnessed it here, you did it.
Cannot believe it. So before I log on, so Planet Police, Planet Schedule, it sounds like police software. And I guess that was their, their intent, but that wasn't going to be enough for us. I wanted something that would also be able to incorporate all city employees. And this does. In the, when I was first hired, we did schedules on a typewriter. And soon we moved to computer. A schedule is, all it is, is a calendar day. It has people assigned to it, it has hours assigned to each people. And theoretically, if you keep track of all of those things, when the people are on the schedule, how many hours you work, it should output something that looks like payroll. And that's what this does. So I'll log in quickly. And let me know, I know how to enlarge my screen a little bit, but if it's large enough for everybody to see, I know, I know that Councilman Donaldson is not going to have the benefit of, of seeing anything. But if you can see it, okay, I'll just continue now, if I don't need to, to make it larger on my screen.
I think I'm the oldest one here and it works.
Okay, good. All right, so you log on, you're on your home screen. This was my schedule for this, this last week. You can see today that I'm not working, which is awesome. I worked Sunday through Wednesday, my shift hours, you can see them there. I was a supervisor and I was assigned to the airport. I'm sorry. This is what the schedule would look like for the city for this week. And for instance, let's take today. Chiefs on the schedule, we have Officer Anderson and Andoy working at the, at, at the Police Department during day shift. And we have Sergeant Guzman and Officer Moore, Detective Moore working at night. Ron Fucci and Karen are both at work. And Brian is currently at FBI Leader Training in Southern California. So this is a snapshot of what a week would look like. So if anything happens during, let's say, work week or during a, a pay, a pay period, let's say you need a time off. You go to the time off request, you tell them why you need the time off, you put in the date. And when, you know, when you're going to be out, the reason why you're not going to be in, that is automatically posted to, and I'm still learning this myself, so don't, don't hold me to it, open shifts review. And let's go out a little bit more if we can. Let's see, it looks like we have no open shifts, which is good. So it's automatically posted to the open shifts. And so the other officers will, will see it automatically and they can sign up for it. In the days before this program, what we would do is we would, I would receive an email, somebody would want some time off. We would go about calling folks to try to find somebody to cover the shift. It's all done within the system now. So at the end of it, when everything is done and our pay, pay period ends, So at the end of it, when everything is done and our pay, pay period ends, which it has recently, go up into payroll here and you export hours, you'll see you will choose the pay period what we're on, which is this one. Click to proceed. And I just wanted to show you one thing under the downloads, there's something called an AVP export. That's the company that currently does our time cards. Um, or not, I guess they do payroll processing. So, you know, it's, it's garbage in, garbage out, right? If we get everything right in our schedule, um, all our i's dotted and our t's crossed, we should be able to export what ADP needs to process our time cards. We're not there yet, but we're working on it. The city manager brought up, uh, the issue that we were having. People that we pay that aren't working on the schedule were the issue and also people that were under salary were an issue for reasons that Planet Police and the scheduling software is based on hours. If the hours that you work are not consistent, your paycheck will be up and down depending on how many work days happen to fall during the work period. Our paycheck's going to be anywhere between 84 hours and 102 hours at the most, I believe. And that's for, that's with no overtime, over that pay period, depending how it, it comes together. If you have a pay period that's exactly two weeks long, everybody's base pay, whether you're salaried, whether you're working or not, um, or whether you are working, is going to be consistent throughout paychecks. And that's what makes it, uh, the change necessary and what enables us to take full advantage of this system. Just because we pay somebody, we, we have, sometimes we have folks on workers' comp, sometimes we have folks on administrative leave. They're, they're still being paid money that must be assigned to them for some reason. And this system has reasons that we can build into it, like hours for workers' comp, hours for administrative leave or whatever that may be. So, um, I guess the bottom line is that this changing to a two-week pay period, um, would, would benefit, the city, this program benefits us. In, in time-saving, um, it will be, it will be an enormous benefit for us. And as always, you know, time is money, right? If we can, if we can make Karen's job easier, if we can make our job easier, it, it's a win-win and, and for the, uh, the, the cost of the program, it used to be almost every single program that you could think of out there, it was, it was like they were built for large cities. There was nothing to scale one for a city our size, but people are thinking about that now. And we've recently gotten two products, including Lefta, which are reasonable for a city our size and uh, other, other cities, uh, within Monterey County, uh, use this program. It, it's, it's, it's been tested. It works well. Officers like it. And so it's a, I think it's a benefit for the city. Thank you.
Thanks, Commander.
Is there anything, any, uh?
Well, I'll, I'll ask for questions.
Okay.
Are, are you okay with that?
Absolutely.
Wonderful. Um, so Ms. Shirley.
Um, thanks, thanks, uh, Chris. This is great. Um, has everyone been trained on this system then? Cause it seems like, is everyone interfaces with this?
We, we made, uh, becau- because we haven't made the change to the two-week pay period, there is also an ability to actually print time cards. And we did make that, um, deadline, I should, I would just call it a deadline. So everybody was able to get all their time in. We figured everything out. This is our first pay period using it. We do have training going forward. Um, I don't, they, they asked us, and I should say that the company also is really good about following up on emails, wanting to help us. So their, their customer service is great and they've already reached out for another training session, but I told them to hold on until, I, I don't know enough to know whether I need another training session yet. I know I do, but I don't want to, I don't need four training sessions. Let me get all my questions together and then we'll do it. But they, they've been very good. Um, everybody got their time in. We're learning the system. I guess that's the best way to put it.
Yeah, that's great. And it's very user-friendly.
Oh, that's so good.
Yeah.
You can, you can either use it on a PC or on a, uh, an app. They have an app that you can just do it, um, you know, from, from home.
Oh, that's great. That's great. Good. Um, yeah, this seems like really kind of a no-brainer. I'm really happy you guys are moving to this because it seems like it makes it easier on you on the front end, but probably on the back end in terms of like, you know, paperwork and things that need to be, um, done. This will make that easier too. So, um, so just good across the board. So, um, no, this is great to see. Thanks for sharing it. Glad you like it.
Thank you.
Mr. Donaldson.
Yeah, Chris, even though I didn't get to actually see the presentation, um, the way you described it, it seems like it's pretty, pretty self-explanatory. And then to hear Karen say that it's really user-friendly, uh, I, I think it's going to be a great system, uh, once you kind of figure out those nuances that you had mentioned. Uh, one of the questions I did have was, you know, we talked about the airport police. Are they integrated into that system as well?
So the, the airport doesn't have a police department any longer. Um, we are their police department. So we, the Delray Oaks Police Department, um, is, is the airport police department, as it were. Uh, so, uh,
Right. I, I misspoke on that. I, I, I mean, those that we integrated over, uh, that, that used to be part of that, uh, airport police.
Yeah, yes, sir. Uh, everybody in the city is integrated. Well, that's not, that's not, everybody that can be is integrated and as soon as we get, uh, our pay period adjusted, uh, we'll have everybody within our city, uh, in the system.
Okay. Yeah, great. Um, you know, particularly it being able, that system, uh, having the capability to do the payroll, those reports, uh, that you had mentioned, and then also being a self-contained system where, as before, like you had mentioned, when someone had a change to their schedule or whatever, had to email and then, you know, you'd have to work outside the system, this seems to eliminate that. So I, I think that's also a, a huge positive for it. And then the last thing I'll say is, I think I heard you say you have the day off today, but yet here you are briefing this committee and, and really, Chris, that exemplifies who you are. And I just wanted to tell you, I appreciate you and I know everyone else does as well. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
All right. Um, I just had a couple of quick, well, first of all, I'm on a two-week pay period, or pay schedule and I love it. There's two months out of the year that I love it even more. Um, so, uh, those are always, uh, fun months. Um, so kind of tying to Scott's question, um, all of our reserves are on this and everybody, uh, that works for the city is on this?
That's correct. With the exception, as I talked about, due to the schedule, the pay schedule currently in the system that we're going to be changing to the two-week schedule, we don't have, a total of four people are not on it or that we, we cannot see a benefit from them being on it because the hours, don't, don't work out.
Yeah. Um, and what are the costs involved in this system?
So, uh, I don't have the contract in front of me. My memory is between $1,200 or $1,300 per year.
Yeah, $1,300.
Okay, great. And that's, um, have we already paid for this? Is it already in this year's budget?
It is.
Okay, great. Um, and then lastly, are there layers of visibility? So as you as commander and chief able to see everything and everything, whereas individuals can only see their stuff? How much, you know, inner transparency is there?
Right. Um, there are, they give them funny names, but one of them, I, I'm a super user. Um, so that's great, right?
Yes, you are.
I can break everything. Um, I've been given the capabilities to ruin this whole thing. So, m- most folks, um, have the ability to see who's working and have the ability to do all of the things that a person would need to do, call in sick. Uh, they worked overtime today, those type of things.
Right.
To add those type of things. And then we have another level of folks that actually are able to approve um, other people's time cards. And so, for instance, Karen can approve Randy's time card, the city manager can approve anybody's time card he wants because he's a city manager. Uh, the supervisors can approve the people under them. And then I have a wide swath of people that I could approve as well. Um, that is a good point. I forgot to bring that up, but, uh, all the approvals are done online. Um, and, uh, we're looking at everybody's. I don't know if I'm still sharing my screen. I guess I am. But these are all of the, the hours for all of the folks that we have. And, and they have all, all been approved. So.
Wonderful. And I think it'll be really helpful in the long term to be able to check and see who's doing overtime and how much and, you know, at the end of the year, reports will be really interesting. So, thank you for sharing this. It's, um, it's helpful and I'm really glad that we're moving in this direction to make it more efficient for not only, um, all the employees, but also the supervisors to be able to, you know, look at everything in one fell swoop. So, it'll be fun to see all your accomplishments as you continue to kind of get to know, you know, all the nuances in it.
No, absolutely. We're, we're working hard on it.
So, nice job.
Thank you.
Is, does, uh, our chief or Karen or, uh, city manager have anything to add or comment?
I, I have a couple of things, yeah. Um, just so, like you and Chris were just talking about, uh, you know, one of the things I'm expecting from this is just another tool to help us with reporting and getting the information. It ma- makes it easier for us to get information on what our staffing levels are, what our costs are associated with that and specifically overtime and how we're managing overtime. But then also, a- again, the reason that we brought this to the finance committee is that, uh, we're going to be recommending a change to a bi-weekly payroll system. And like everything else, uh, when you make a change like that, there's going to be a little hiccup and there's going to be a little adjustment period. And so, uh, we're, we're having an all-hands meeting with the staff on the 24th so that we can explain it to them and get their buy-in because we want to make sure that everybody understands what's coming and we'll have Roberto there to explain the, the nuances and the details for that, what that first paycheck is going to look like because it's going to be different. And then how it's going to go going forward so that everybody understands what the transition will look like for them financially and they can, you know, readjust their family budgets and everything to a new reality. And, and like the mayor said, uh, you know, most of us have been on this kind of bi-weekly payroll system and, and it's, it's nice because you adjust your monthly budget to those set check amounts for every two weeks and then twice a month or twice a year, you, you get a bonus check. Cause it's a 26-month or 26 payroll period, uh, not 24 like we're on now. So it's like getting two extra checks. Money, the money over the course of the year doesn't change. The annual or the hourly rate doesn't change. But if you adjust your budget, it's like saving without thinking about saving.
Exactly. Although the first, the first paycheck is a little lower. So. Chief, did I, did I hear you there?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. I just want to thank Chris for, you know, working on this and, uh, the council and, and the boss. Uh, just another one of the things that we've been able to implement technology-wise. The PD's been so far behind for so many years and, and we're getting there with RMS and this and some of the other things we've done. So it's, uh, I'm, I'm pleased. This is what I'm used to in, you know, in my former life or lives. So, thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chief.
And I just wanted to thank Chris too, because this was his brainchild and he has just run with this and, um, explained it to everybody. It's, he's doing great. Thank you, Chris.
It's one of the many things that he hides under the mask on his forehead and when he's holding the mask on his forehead.
I hope everybody's as happy when you get your first paycheck and it's for $1.
Well, then I know where you live.
Chris, nicely done. Um, so let's move on. Uh, number seven, review of American Recovery Plan Act project options. Mr. Gerton.
Yeah, and I'm gonna share my screen now. Since Chris made it look so easy. Okay, so, so you all recall, uh, back in December, uh, we talked in general terms about, uh, the ARPA money that's coming. As you can see on the slide, we'll be getting just shy of $400,000, uh, through the ARPA system. We, we have the one, uh, 197,000 in the bank for the first amount. We're still putting together a plan, uh, for, uh, projects that we think would be, uh, a good use of that money. Uh, we talked before, uh, about using it for these types of, of technology upgrades and modernization and some of the, you know, long outstanding, uh, routine maintenance that's been deferred uh, to some of our facilities. So this is the project list that we proposed at that council meeting. Just as the things that we're thinking of. And while we're putting together some of the bigger things and getting estimates and, and figuring out what we think would be the best bang for the buck, there's a few low-hanging fruit items that aren't huge expenditures that I, I, I didn't want to delay on and I wanted to keep the momentum that we have in administration and getting some of the uh, updates going. Um, and it's not entirely just because Karen has been writing me to get this stuff for her to make her life easier. Although that's a big, big fire for me to get that stuff going. Uh, but so this was the list. These are the areas that we want to focus on for today. And Scott, I'll be clearer so that you, because I know you're not seeing this. Uh, I'll read everything out. Uh, but the, the first thing is, is really easy. It's agenda management software. Uh, we've all been talking about this. Um, it, it, it's not just good for us in, in our administration of the city, but it's good for the community because it helps improve our transparency and our communication and getting the message out. And people, especially in this day and age where people aren't coming into city hall, this will help them access our pa- our agenda packets better, our staff reports better and, uh, and be able to watch the videos related specifically to an item that they want to watch. Um, so we've been working with Granicus. This is an estimate from Granicus. Uh, the initial one-time upfront fee is the 5,300. And so that's just the buying the software, getting the training, the implementation, getting all of that done. Um, and then the first-year cost is the 7,368. And then just so you all know, uh, that then becomes an ongoing annual cost and that's for our licenses and for, uh, the support from them on managing the system. Karen, you can jump in if there's anything I'm missing. Um, but generally, we've talked about this before. Generally, generally, I wouldn't recommend using one-time funding sources for, uh, something that creates ongoing costs for the city. But, uh, the, I think ARPA is a good use for this because there are the one-time costs of the, the actual getting the software and getting it implemented and getting staff trained to use it. And then the ongoing costs really will be offset by the efficiencies that we'll create and with the cost that we're already incurring for providing the services, the way that we provide the services. So I don't, I don't see a significant, uh, impact to our annual ongoing budget. I think this is something that we can absorb as our current cost of operating. Um, and the increase in i- i- in service to the community, I think, far outweighs any minor increase in, in annual costs. So, then.
Um, the, one thing that I'm impressed with is The one thing that I'm impressed with is there will be, there's no lag time. We are going to have a meeting and poof, it's going to be online. The approval process and the verification on resolutions and items for agendas, the agenda packet will be smoother and will be, I'll feel more protected just because of the approval process.
Yeah, it's just better overall compared to what we're doing now. And then similar is the record management software. Same thing, it's 4,500 for the implementation. That's the one-time cost. And then 3,000, basically $4,000 for the annual fee. So you see that the first year will be $8,500. And then annually going on from there is approximately $4,000. So again, very similar. But I think that this is a critical one for us. You know, one of the frustrations here for me, for everyone, is just tracking down records. And when we get public records requests, making sure we're getting the right records, that we have everything that's responsive and doing it in a timely way. But also just keeping a good accessible record of our history so that as we're making decisions in the future, we can go back and look at prior council or prior planning commission decisions and have all the records there. And we don't have to go digging for them. We can find them easily. And that helps inform our decisions going into the future. And again, transparency, this is huge for being more transparent with the community and educating the community and giving them the resources to understand how and why we're making the decisions that we're making. So again, similar thing, small upfront expenditure, but I think it's important. And this one, I know for a fact, will pay dividends in the annual costs compared to how we're currently doing it, mainly because this is an area where we can get into a lot of legal problems when we don't have records or can't respond to public records requests or, you know, end up in court and we don't have records. And, you know, there's a lot of different ways where not having a good record of what we've done can bite us in the long run. So these incremental costs upfront save us a lot in the long run. So, anything I missed there, Karen?
No, the only thing that I would think of, and I'm sorry I didn't bring this up to you before, John, these figures might be a little lower when, once we're done with our downloading of all of our forms, which we're very close to doing. Because this was based on a larger number.
Right.
We had no idea how many documents we had in all those filing cabinets. Now we're getting close to knowing and I don't think it's going to be this high.
Okay, great.
So that's a good.
And that's good too, because I've been talking with the mayor a lot in our, just in our updates about our record management program and the fact that, you know, we got a record retention policy in place now. And now we have Lee here helping us getting our files in order and basically cleaning out our files and organizing them in accordance with that record retention policy.
Exactly.
Helping us really dial in what our record, what our records are and what they should be and cleaning out what shouldn't be here and then organizing what we do need.
And then what we're doing is we're having, she's scanning everything. So once we get this record management software, it's just going to be such an easy transfer of, you know, like let them handle it. With our guidance, obviously, but yeah, we're almost done. I'm so excited.
It'll be great.
Yeah.
And then the last two are kind of combined. They're all basically dealing with the same thing, but we talked last month about as we hopefully gradually come out of the pandemic, what do future meetings look like? And at the risk of overusing a cliche that everybody uses, doing things online, once you let the genie out of the bottle, you can't put them back in. So I think some level of online participation is probably what we have now going forward. So we're looking at our technology needs to be able to provide that service to the community effectively and efficiently. So that initially we can do hybrid meetings. I think hybrid meetings are probably the way it's going to go at some level. You know, it would be great if we get to a point where all the council members, all the commissioners and all the staff, we're all in the room and anybody who wants to participate in person shows up, but everybody still has the opportunity to participate live from home. And I think that that's just something that we do now because we're all seeing the level of participation has really gone up throughout the pandemic. It's one of those, always looking for the silver lining on the last two years. And that's, that's one of the small ones. But so right now, we've been working with our IT support staff, Yavuz. Fortunately, we're very fortunate that he's already had a couple of years of experience with this with some other agencies that he works with, specifically with the Air District. So he's had two years now of working with this on what works, what doesn't work. And so he's fine-tuned it. And so he's helping us get estimates for that. Some of that includes with the agenda management software system going digital for you all so that you all get digital packets now and you have the equipment that you need to be able to manage that so that we're not printing so much paper to fill those binders every month. And getting the agendas out quicker and with staff reports attached so that the community can see them earlier. But then also improving our sound system and our recording system in the chambers. So there's a bunch of different technology that goes along with that. But getting a monitor so that it's going to be important, you know, especially Mayor for you when you're running the meetings. It's helpful if somebody's sitting at home on their couch and they're providing public comment that we can see them and see them clearly and we're not all squinting at a pull-down screen. Instead, we have a clear monitor where everybody can see. But then also, in anticipation of coming back, I know in the past we've had issues come up where we have overflow because our chamber is small. And I've heard from various members of the public that a concern has always been the ability to follow along with what's happening in the chamber while they're out in the lobby in the overflow area. So we want to provide better, you know, put a monitor out that can be used for council meetings where folks can actually see what's happening as if they were sitting at home on their couch and can hear clearly. And then on regular days, we would have it just cycling information. So when folks come in and talk with us, they can get calendar updates and event updates, things like that from the monitor. So it's fairly standard kind of thing, but just the little things that we're working on. And then there's other things that are going to take a little more time that might potentially be infrastructure things in terms of our HVAC system and upgrading filtration and that type of stuff. But I think right now we're ballparking $7,500, $8,000 just for the technology upgrades. And we'll get that more honed in for the February 22nd council meeting. So by the time we bring this to you all on the 22nd, we'll have, we'll have actual estimates on everything so that the full council can consider that. But, but I wanted to bring that to you all. And then also I wanted to apologize because as council member Shirley rightly pointed out to me yesterday, as we go forward and we're continuing to, you know, talk about these committee meetings and how we're going to manage these committees and providing staff reports and agendas and stuff. This is definitely, of all of the things we talked about today, this is one that I would have preferred to have had a staff report prepared for you all. But with conference last week and then feeling a little sick this week and everything, I had all these plans to do a staff report for you. And then one day Karen said, hey, guess what? It's too late. And so I missed it. I apologize, but we'll get better as we go forward. And so I just want you all to know that normally I would try to get this information out to you all sooner so you have time to digest it. So it's just work in progress. So with that, I'm answering the questions.
Wonderful. Well, before I ask everybody else, I am thrilled by any and all of this. And what I added up was about 20K for these first initial items. And so let's go up for questions. Ms. Shirley.
You know, I don't have any questions. John, thank you. No worries. I understand having a staff report. You're totally forgiven. I'm so excited about these upgrades. I feel like it's going to make your lives better and that makes me happy. And I think it's going to make our lives better. And I'm thrilled about the transparency for the public too. I think that's good for all of us as we deal with the public. And so I think these are just really smart moves. I'm curious, so John, can you explain, so, you know, I've never sat at the dais. So if I'm sitting there with these new technology upgrades, what is it going to look like for me? Like what's going to be in front of me?
I think, and Jeff and Karen, feel free to jump in, but I think we're thinking that we would still keep the pull-down screen for PowerPoint presentations, that type of thing. But what Yavuz has presented that they use at the Air District is they have a camera system that, with a monitor that can actually be moved around and it has multiple cameras on it. I think they call it the owl. Because it actually tracks the action. So when somebody's speaking, the camera will actually track to who's speaking. And then you would see them on the monitor. So we could see, just like we do in Zoom now, you would see everyone at home on the monitor. And then when somebody's speaking, then their face would come up on the monitor.
Good. So we'd have like a couple monitor or how many monitors would we have in the chambers?
Is it a couple monitors, Karen?
I think it's two. I think.
Yeah, and we'll have to do a few dry runs to.
Yeah, and oh yeah, we're, we'll act like we're having meetings and stuff for a while.
Yeah, I know, because of the Waste Management District, we have two screens because when you're sitting on the curve, you're either looking in one way or the other way. And so, yeah, and that seems to work. So, and my mom will be happy. She can continue to attend our council meetings, which she loves. The hybrid. So I'm excited for you guys. I think it's a great use of money, even though we have these ongoing costs. I think it's, it definitely pays off in the end. So thank you so much.
Interesting for your question. You'll also have a little laptop. This includes the tablets. Well, they're like little laptops. And that's where you'll be looking at your agenda and making your own notes, that type of thing.
Oh, good.
That's going to be in front of you.
Yeah, and they're actually laptops that fold over and you can use it like a tablet.
Like a tablet, yeah.
I see. Okay, cool. All right. Thank you.
Very nice. Mr. Donaldson?
Yes, I completely concur with these expenditures for all the reasons that John had mentioned. And really, they are expenditures that are going to pay huge dividends in the future. And also I'd like to just echo Kim's comments, you know, all the goodness that is going to come out of this. And it's great to hear Karen's comments because it validates that, you know, it's something that the staff, it's going to benefit the staff and it's something that the staff wants. Also, John, your comments about the way meetings will be run in the future and just all your comments about how we will conduct our meetings, kind of in that hybrid sense, that's completely spot on. And I really appreciate that. And I would just say that I am a big advocate for getting back into chambers as soon as we can. So I think there's just a lot of goodness to that. And really, I just wanted to take this opportunity to advocate for that once again. Thank you.
Okay, I agree with all of the comments. I think this is really exciting. How quickly could, like, I'm guessing the technology is going to take a little longer. But how quickly can the agenda and the record management get implemented?
Well, they call me on a weekly basis to see what you all have decided.
Okay.
So I can't imagine that it would take very long, but I can get you, by the time we go to council with all of this, I'll have an idea.
Perfect. And is the record management also Granicus?
It's not. It's Laserfish.
Okay, okay. And, you know, so we have the initial costs, we have the, you know, first-year costs and then we have the annual costs. What about upgrades? I'm guessing, you know, with this kind of technology and software, there are constant upgrades. Do we have any anticipated costs involved with those?
John, if I could? For Granicus, the, it, the amount goes up in year three. So I think they're counting in the upgrades with that. I have, I will have to talk to Laserfish because I don't know. They just gave me the one price.
Yeah, it makes sense that it will either go up or, you know, to, I mean, with technology these days, it goes so quickly.
Yeah.
And is there any way that we could prepay and perhaps get a discount?
That's a good question.
The annual, you know, annual fee, you know, we pay for three years or something and then they give us 25% off or something.
I will, I'll ask. I'm all for that.
Yeah, you gotta ask, but. And I think that's it. I have heard really good things about the owl. I know that San City also uses it. For me, having, you know, when Kim said she's never been on the dais, it's, I love Zoom because I can see my colleagues' faces and see their faces when they speak. And on the dais, that is very difficult, at least sitting in the middle, looking out. And that's a huge part of communication. So having the ability to see my colleagues, I would miss that going back in without some kind of a monitor to be able to do that. But wonderful. So it sounds like some of this or these four items will come to us at the end of the month?
Yes.
Okay, great. Any other comments from staff?
Nope.
All right. Well, you guys, thank you so much. This is, again, continuing to clean up and update and, you know, get us, get us up and going. And less time on staff and more efficiency for council and more transparency for the public. It's like, it's all good.
Yeah. So Mayor, I know we don't have any public in the meeting, but just for the record, maybe we should put it out to the public.
Yes, thank you. So let's go up for public comment. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, let's bring it back. Any last minute comments from council?
No.
Members? No?
Thank you.
Okay, so on that, we are adjourned. Our next meeting, I don't have the date, but it's the second Friday of March.
Also the 11th.
It's also the 11th. Well, of course, it's February. All right. Well, happy Valentine's Day, everyone, and we'll see in a couple of weeks. Looking forward to seeing what come, what you guys come up with between now and then.
All right. Go Gaucho, Scott.
Thank you, Roberto.
Thanks, Roberto.
Yeah. Thank you, Roberto. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye.